Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 28th meeting of the Davidson County Commissioners to order, and it's my pleasure to share the invocation and pledge with you tonight. Would you like to bow with me? I'd like to read Daniel 2:21. He changes times and seasons. He deposes kings and raises up others. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to the discerning Lord. We know you are the one who raises up rulers and kings. We pray for our leaders and future leaders and those who elect them to have wisdom, knowledge, and discernment, for these things come from you. And in our country today, we give thanks for the democracy alive and for the freedom to worship you. Help the elected government and all in positions of power and authority to govern wisely and for the common good of all. Help us all to recognize that humility and respect for democracy are characteristics which make America a beacon for stability and prosperity around the world, characteristics that should be upheld as they were fought for by ancestors who sacrificed so very much for the freedoms we too often take for granted. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize supervisors and directors and those visitors tonight that are with us, and I'd like, if you're interested and you are a veteran, Commissioner McClure here has a lapel pin for you if you'd like to come up and receive one. And if you'd like to stand as a veteran, just to be recognized, we'd like that as well.
Yeah, boy, I'll throw him out there.
Come on.
There we go.
Think anybody's free. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
That's Hal Rupert.
Yes, it is.
I thought they was Santa Claus.
Hal, I'm recognizing you as scheduled to be our Lexington Chamber Council of Chambers representative, and thank you again. Tonight, I need to ask the Commissioners if I could have a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Yates tonight.
Madam Chair.
I have my motion for Commissioners Shores and McClure.
Verbatim.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. If you have not registered for public address and are interested in speaking, you can come up to the table here. Gentlemen, if you'll take a look at the agenda, are there any changes for the agenda tonight? Hearing none, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Trowell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McClure. Please cast your vote.
Sure, what, like a hundred votes?
Come on. Try it again.
Thank you, all of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, is anyone registered for public address?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. All right. As Mr. Crook comes forward. Item eight tonight is a request for a special use permit Class A by Aaron Davis in Conrad Hill Township. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce the application and provide instructions regarding this quasi-judicial nature.
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners. We do, our first item tonight is a special use permit request by Aaron Davis for a special use permit Class A to construct and operate a manufactured home park in an RM1 medium-density residential district. Said property is located on the south end of Scarborough Hills Drive approximately 270 feet south of the Shady Creek Lane intersection. Said intersection is located on Shady Creek Lane approximately .16 mile west of the Lacy Heffler Road intersection. Property is further described as Conrad Hill Township, tax map 23, lot 46, containing 35.8 acres, more or less. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and as such, we would probably need to swear everyone in at this point that would wish to speak. So, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the Aaron Davis request, please come forward and we'll swear everyone in.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Grand willing.
Madam Chair, do you want to swear them in or do you want?
Yes, I will. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to the board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can I help you, God?
Yes, ma'am.
I do.
I do.
It's a blessing when you're doing a special use permit for a manufactured home park and only two people stand up. This application has had a long journey with our office and with this board. We've, this board has been gracious enough to table it, I think, two or three times, but we have everything ready tonight and ready to go. If you will direct your attention to the board, I'd like to describe this. Help if I cut the laser on. Okay. Lacy Heffler Road is right here. This is south of Mount Zion Church Road. There's an existing manufactured home park of nine spaces that currently, is currently on the property. On the maps that we provided you folks, that's marked as Phase 1. That's existing, it's on the ground. The initial request was for a larger park than what's actually happening. And what took place was, Mr. Davis prepared an excellent application, dotted his i's, crossed his t's. We found out we had some old SOLES data. So, he went and got new SOLES data and found out the SOLES wasn't quite as good as what he had hoped it would be. So, we're actually only hearing approval tonight for, or approval or denial for Phase 2. Phase 3 may or may not come in the future. So, some of the documentation, the impact analysis and things like that, that originally were submitted at the beginning of the process, talk about the larger part. But to clear up any confusion, we're adding nine spaces to the existing nine spaces for a total of 18 spaces. That, yes, sir.
Is that the reason for some of the delays which?
Yes, sir. That's, surveyors and SOLES folks, the development is so busy right now, they are delayed and delayed and delayed. And I know, I know Mr. Davis will probably speak to that when he comes up, but he tried everything he could to get it done as quickly as possible. So, I think that's everything I want to say on the front end, if Mr. Davis would like to come up and explain his application.
Sure. Board, I appreciate your patience and your willingness to entertain this and consider this, and I really appreciate your Lee and Scott's offices and themselves from helping to advise me on what to do and sort of where to go and how to adjust things as I'm, as I've navigated this. So, thank you.
If you, if you want to explain what you're proposing, if you want to add anything to what I've?
Sure. So, the park as it sits now and without the benefit of a laser, you can see here at the sort of the top of the map, it's a little bit sparsely populated with trees. Oh, there's a laser. Okay, let's see here. Can we see that there? That's where the nine spaces are now. The lots are approximately, you know, from anywhere from one and a half to three acres in size, and there's a, there's a stream that comes sort of like this across the property. And so, the economics didn't suggest going across the creek to develop this, what we consider Phase 3. Right? If I could just walk over and?
That's fine.
So, originally, the creek bed in the Hundred Year Flood Plains are going here, and originally the development was to go across that to occupy this space and this space. And then, what we realized is that there wasn't quite enough soils to do the entire thing, and the economics were such that it didn't make sense to go across the creek at this time. So, scaled it back, and it's just, it's just the nine spaces here and their associative soils to support those structures. The board, or I believe that the office has requested that there be a widening of the road. Originally, when the, when the park was constructed many years ago, it was a little bit of a thinner road and doesn't meet the codes of today, and so, it's been recommended to widen the road a little bit and to provide that cul-de-sac for fire, and I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may. Lee, you know where I'm going with this. What does runoff look like here? And I know we have a stream or creek here in this, so what, what does that look like?
Well, as Mr. Davis, if approved, while Mr. Davis is developing this, he'll have to submit a plan to the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality for an erosion control permit. It'll be his responsibility to keep all the silt on site and keep it out of the creek. And once the site's done, I don't, this is an area of the county that doesn't have stormwater regulations. So, once it's developed, it'll be developed and then those requirements for the erosion control will end.
Okay.
Without, he will have to get a DEQ permit for that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone who has been sworn in or wants to speak in favor or opposition? I don't think there is, but I thought I would say that. I've got a question, Mr. Crook.
Yes, ma'am.
When's the last time a mobile home park has been expanded in our county? I mean?
We handled one about six months ago.
Six months ago.
For Ricklinier, West Park, out on 150.
Yeah.
The same process.
Same process, because there haven't been as many in the past 10 to 15 years, has there?
Correct.
Okay.
That's astute observation. We haven't approved a manufactured home park or an expansion in a long time.
A long time.
I couldn't give you the exact date, but it's been years.
Okay. Okay. Lots are, the size of the lots again were?
The size, I think that the code mandates that they're larger than 20,000 square feet, and I think that the smallest one and the proposed is 23,000 square feet. And then, this, you know, this one here on the bottom is, this one's 35,000, this one's actually 20,500. I believe that's actually the smallest one. This one's 46,000, 21,000, 3,000, 20,000 there, but they are all in excess of what is mandated.
Okay.
Mr. Crook, what, do we have a, is there a limitation on the year or model of these trailers?
Not per the ordinance. That would be up to Mr. Davis, and he did submit a copy of his park rules and regu, proposed park rules and regulations. It would be up to him to regulate if there's a year, year regulation or year model, certain number, certain age of manufactured home that he would no longer allow.
Do you mind telling us what you plan on doing?
For what it's worth, I have spoken to the dealership here in Thomasville, the Clayton Homes dealership, and they are amenable to putting a model home, which is a brand-new home, on the, at the location in the event of a favorable ruling here tonight. It is, it's my preference that, that homes are newer. The residents that are there have pride of ownership, they own their own homes, I own the dirt that's underneath it, and so, I would, I've been, since taking ownership of the property, I've been sort of a stickler about making sure that it's cleaned up and that it's taken care of, and that the grass is mowed and things like that, and I'm grateful that they have met me in that demand. And so, I'll continue that. There's a, there's, and I'm not sure of the laws, but I believe it's, I think it's something like 25, if a, if a home is 25 years or older, it's not able to be moved, and that's something that's a DOT rule. But I, it is my intent and my goal to have new homes in the expansion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, you lease the land and then you put restrictions on the whole kind of home that can't be located there?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Mr. Crook, the recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did include my recommendation in the packet. I won't, I won't read it verbatim. We reviewed the application. Mr. Davis has submitted information to qualify and satisfy all the requirements, and we feel that all the general standards are met at the staff level. The Davidson County Land Development Plan does promote, in state with policy statement 6.5 and 6.10, to, you know, support the, the development of alternative types of housing at all economic levels. So, we would recommend approval at the staff level and feel that the application is complete.
What has the, what was the planning board's decision?
This, this being a special use permit, they do not hear?
They do not hear that. Okay.
That was, that was a change we made in, for the 160D requirements.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes.
Mr. Crook, you are asking for the application and all the several attachments to that application to be received into evidence by the board?
I am, yes, sir. And all of that was included in the packet.
Just wanted to make sure that was in the record, Madam McClure. Or, excuse me, Madam Chair.
All right. We'll, we'll have to go through four standards here. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and he will read through the four standards and we'll ask for a vote on each one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The standard number one is the use will promote the public health, safety, and general welfare if located where proposed and developed and operated according to the plans as submitted. Staff answers, staff feels that the use will promote public health, safety, and general welfare by providing an affordable housing option in a loc, in a location that already contains manufactured housing.
Okay.
So, we approve, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Standard two, the use which is listed, I'm sorry.
We have to vote.
Sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Apologies.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Sorry about that. The use which is listed as a special use in the district which is to be located complies with all required regulations and standards, including the provisions of Article 4 of this ordinance unless greater or different regulations are contained in the individual standards that, for that special use. And staff replies, staff feels that the application can or will meet the regulations and standards if approved and constructed.
Motion and second to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion. Second. Second, Mr. Sheil. Please cast your vote.
I'm catching up with you. I had it upside down. Excuse me. No wonder I couldn't read it.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. General standard three, that the use will maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property or that the use is a public necessity. Staff's comment is the applicant has submitted an impact study from Hilton Crowder and Associates that indicate no negative impact to contiguous properties with respect to value, and staff concurs.
We approve.
Motion from Commissioner McClure, second, from Commissioner Shores.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
All right. The last one. General standard four, that the use, that the use is in compliance with the general plans for the physical development of the county as embodied in these regulations. Staff's comment is, this area of Davidson County is designated for residential development by the Davidson County Land Development Plan. Said plan promotes manufactured housing development, especially when consistent with existing development patterns.
Okay. Motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Shores, second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Sheil. Please cast your vote.
Third.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
And then finally, we have a motion, may I have a motion and a second to either approve or deny the special use permit request?
We approve.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. McClure and Mr. Shores, please cast your one final vote.
All of the votes are in.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Lee and Mr. Scott, I really appreciate you guys for helping me, and I, yeah, I thank you.
All right. We'll go on to a resounding request by Claire Stokes Wiley in Boone Township containing 1.44 plus or minus acres from LI to RA2. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a request by Claire Stokes Wiley to rezon property located in Boone Township, tax map 18, a portion of lot 20, containing 1.44 acres more or less. Property is located on the north side of Sam Sharp Road approximately 31/100ths of a mile east of the Clyde Fitzgerald Road intersection. Zoning is requested to change from that of LI Limited Industrial District to that of RA2 Rural Agricultural District. This is actually a remnant of a, let's see, get to the zoning map. There we go. If you'd please divert your attention to the screen. This is a remnant, LI remnant that was left over from a plus 30-acre rezoning that happened, I think it was back in like '07 or something like that, 2007. There was, there's a creek that runs across the property, and in 1990, this was designated as an LI district here on this farm. And I think it was a rezoning under Gold Print Farms that came through in 2007 and rezoned the 35 acres. This was a remnant that was not part of that property, and these folks are just asking to clean the LI up. This is a, in a agric, a voluntary ag district, and it is, I'm sure it's a heritage farm, so it's going to be farmed for as long as these folks have it.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Wiley, are you here?
Yes.
Can you come forward and explain this request?
Lee, this wasn't in a forestry bank or anything, was it?
I do believe that the property, this is in the forestry program with respect to the deferment from the tax department. This is a portion of the property that belongs to Easton Smith Stokes and others, and it's a tree farm.
Okay. That is great. Hello. Thank you for considering this, this evening. We did realize that this was sort of a dangling item, and the 1.4 acres, and as he has well stated, we were trying to tidy this up because it is in agricultural use, as stated, part of a tree farm, and has been and is intended to carry that forward. So, we're asking for your consideration in bringing this all together back into RA2.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak or either, speak in either favor of or in opposition to this request? So, Mr. Crook, what's the staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation is included in the packet, and we would move for approval based on the fact that it's contiguous to existing RA2.
Okay.
And this is, this is what it's going to be used for for foreseeable future.
I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and a second to approve or deny?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And we have, by Mr. McClure, and second by Commissioner Shores.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Okay. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a motion to approve for Mr. Elliott.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Shores. Please cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. For deliberation tonight, I'll call Mr. Smith to talk about public health agreement addendum.
Madam Chair, I want to ask Lillian Coons, our public health director, to come forward. She's got a new grant agreement award from the state to fund for staffing to help with keeping up, I think, with the schools quarantining of their children that have the virus, so I'll let her explain any details to the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, great to see y'all tonight. I am back again with an agreement addenda from North Carolina DPH. The goal with this agreement addenda is to try to assist the schools in opening safely. Originally, when we received the addenda, it was recommended by local public health departments to make some changes. Those changes came out, and then we bring that before you today. The request is for two office support positions. It's $115,000. We have three school systems in Davidson County, so when you try to split 115 by three, and then when you think about population and school system size, it's not a really easy fit. But we think that these two positions could help our school systems with the COVID-19 crisis, and they would work directly with the schools, and they would work under the school nurse supervisor at the health department.
What part of that $115,000 goes to those two positions?
Um, well, let's see. When you break it down, the salary would be $41,112.
So, you're talking about what, $80,000 for two positions, correct?
Um, yes, sir. I think so.
So, would you use the remainder of money for testing and vaccine needs, or how would you, how would the remainder of the money be spent?
It's quite complicated, but the easiest way to simplify that is the school systems have a whole different way to bring testing onboard. Two of the three systems in Davidson County have elected to do that, and they're working through that process right now. It's independent of the public health department. The other funds used in this would be a lot of postage and mailing. We send a lot of letters from the health department for teachers and students that are quarantined, so we would use the monies for that. They also would need a computer and a phone and things like that to do this work.
Additional questions?
No cost to county, I mean, as far as?
No match.
No match.
No, sorry. These are just direct dollars, and they end?
They end when the grant ends.
At the end of the school year, so it's a very short-term position, or two positions.
Is that superintendent back there?
Mm-hmm.
Hell with your mask on. Or is the school board on, on board with this?
They're on board for any help that we can.
Okay. I just want to be, pay the courtesy of Lisa Askew.
Mr. Manager, the breakdown, I guess on, I don't know, second page of this, and I hit the wrong button and it all left me. But the breakdown that's here, that's where all the monies are going. It's not going anywhere else or?
No, it goes in those line items that's on the attachment there. It's actually a little more for the people when you count all the fringes. So, it's 80 for the salaries, but then you got the insurance and retirement. They'll end up eating 100 of the 115. What's left is, goes to some supplies and setting up the computer and things, the phones, et cetera.
Any further questions?
Uh, more manager, I'll move to.
Second. Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Sheil and a second from Commissioner Trowell. Please cast your vote. Thank you, Ms. Coons.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Commissioner McClure, can I have your vote, please?
All right. I get to vote, why?
You do.
You do.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Smith and Mr. Marshburn. He's going to come up and talk to us about a land-water conservation fund grant application. This is for Parks and Recreation.
Madam Chair, I think the, the item there, if you bought, and I'm sure all the board members have reviewed there, the description's well-written in terms of what the grant towed. have reviewed their, the description's well-written in terms of what the grant total is, what the match is for, what it's going for. I brought Thomas Ford to get any additional feedback on this you all may have, and also because it's such a large dollar amount to apply for. Remember, we're asking for permission to apply, so we don't have to come up with the matching funds just yet, but in case he is awarded this grant. But I wanted y'all to have an opportunity to talk to us. A rather large request for a local match.
And also, if we are lucky enough to get awarded, it comes back to you again before we can do anything to, for y'all to approve it to go to the state, because this is a state and federal. The state's administering it for the federal government. This is the first time I've ever done a LWCF grant and the ones that I've participated in in the past was straight with the federal government. This time, it's, federal government dumped it down to the state level and the state complicated it even more than the federal had it complicated. So we have spent eight months working on this grant. It's over 800 pages long to just tell the story that we would like to put three playgrounds in and five environmental gardens and a koi pond out at the Yakima River Park.
The total is going to be 1.1 million.
Yes, sir.
And the grant is for 500,000 and then we would give the 600,000.
Yes, sir. Yep. And reason that's, reason that's done like that is usually they show more favorable to the ones that put more in it than what you're asking for. And that would come from the consultant that we looked at. He said if we're going to go for this large of amount, we should dump in a little bit more there to make sure that it looked a little bit more favorable when it went in. So, and that's, and the majority of it is the playground equipment. I don't know if you looked at it or not, but it's $750,000 just for the playground units. These are all themed playground units for the historical elements that has occurred at that facility. One's for the fort, one's for the trains and one's for the bridge itself. It'll look like the bridge, replica of the bridge in a playground. And they're all going to be fun for all playgrounds, which means they'll have the rubber surfacing like the one that's down here at the bottom. And then their environmental gardens will be all around the playground inside a concrete sidewalk that goes around.
Have a motion?
Is the PTRC happening? Is it all anyway with writing the grants and all? You said it's about 600 pages.
Uh, no, sir. It's been me and Mr. Scott Hewland that's wrote the grant and Monica Byerly from my staff has helped a little bit as well. She'll be the one that actually finalizes this thing up and ships it off to Raleigh Friday if it's approved.
It's my understanding that if we submit or we approve, that you are able to acquire funds to sort of match them?
If it's a board priority, we will fund the funds. But we've got plenty of funds in capital reserve. Everything around here is about priorities, you know. If you, if the economy hits the skids tomorrow and that's the last 600,000 we have, we may have to take it from not doing something else. But, you know, it goes back to what we talked about before, you know, we know we've got several big projects on the horizon we want to do. This is, I hate, this is kind of one of those fun things that we all want to do and this is a chance to do it with partly somebody else's money too, at a place that we've been trying to build up for years. And, you know, it's hard to do when you're trying to do it on your own, so.
We all knew when we took this, it's going to be expensive down the road and this is an opportunity to get some of those funds from.
Yeah, and we're not obligating ourselves to.
Right, correct. And I think Thomas is just trying to go big or go home here. If he's going to get something, he's going to put 800 pages on the table if he wants to get a million dollars for it at least.
Madam Chair, I would just like to, you know, first start off by saying, you know, probably about 11, 12 years ago, drove a bus, took Commissioner Shell down to see a bridge that was like that. And a lot of the commissioners that sit on this board have been, you know, intimately involved in this project since then and even before. And, you know, to have somebody on staff like Thomas that is an expert grant writer, that can get us those funds to make our dollars even go further for our citizens, that is a win that we have here at the county. I think you're doing a tremendous job. And, you know, a lot of the citizens don't, they don't know the things that we have planned out there and what, how, just, just how big of a destination this is going to be historically. So I would just like to, you know, thank the board for your insight for what y'all have done. For, I mean, my kids and my grandkids are going to be able to go and look at this stuff and I'd like to thank you for investing in areas like this throughout our county because, you know, kids and families need places that they can go and I'm proud. We have a beautiful county. We have a lot to offer. So, thank you, sir, and thank you, Commissioners.
Madam Chair, if we'll real quick, because I thought, I think this may be something the folks on the board and, and y'all will be interested in. Had a pleasure being out there today with Jeff from Fresno. What's his last name? I can't remember.
I can't remember his last name.
Michael. I meant Michael.
Super nice guy. And it's really something to see the enthusiasm and excitement that the state actually has for our part.
That's right.
Jay, you were there?
Yeah. And the exciting part too is a lot of the grants, even the grants that Larry was able to acquire for us has come through his office. So it's good to see that he's on board backing the project that we're doing as well.
Are you up against a lot of competition on this one?
Absolutely.
But this is really kind of like we're getting into 50% off.
That's right.
Right, right.
This, this one's a lot. The way the state did it, it's a lot like the part-of grants that, you know, we brought for, to do the first project at Wilcox Bridge. It's a lot like that one as far as competition-wise. It just, this was based on the federal guidelines to do it with part-of guidelines on top of federal guidelines. So it made it a lot more complicated. And as I was telling him today as we were out there, the only thing I hate about this grant is you don't get to tell your story. With the part-of grant, we always get to submit a justification page to tell why this is such a good project. Well, the federal government don't care about that. They want to know just about their environmental reviews and all this stuff and they get down through all that stuff and the historical aspect of it and everything, but they don't want to hear your story. And that was the, that was the issue. I told him I thought that we were going to have the hardest part because if you're just looking at it as landmass, we're building on top of an existing road that used to be there. When you start looking at it from that aspect and you're just using it as environmental, they're going to look at this grant and say, oh, this ain't an environmental grant. We shouldn't be doing this. But then when you look at it and what we're doing with the old road bed that is going to be left there, we're turning it into something that's going to be environmental, then that's a whole different thing if you can relate that story. And I told him, you know, really missed that justification page not being able to tell that story.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. We approve the proceeding. Go ahead with this grant application.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Mr. McClure and Mr. Shell.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thomas.
Dress up today.
Okay. All of the votes are in and that motion carries by a vote of six to zero. Next item is the award of central permitting software with OpenGov. Mr. Smith and Mr. Martin.
Madam Chair, I want to ask Todd Hancock and some of his staff to come forward from the Inspection Department, but let me tee this one up just for a second. A few weeks ago, this group pitched a presentation to the Facilities Committee about a new inspection system. We sent the presentation out to the entire board, but I thought it would be very prudent to have the entire board get a clean look at this tonight. What you'd be asking to do at the end of this, take a look at this system that we're, we've, we looked at a lot of systems. We narrowed it down to one, that we would like the board to give us approval to recommend entering into an agreement with and moving forward to purchase. And Todd's going to go into the why we're here in just a second, as far as our existing system. But I, again, I want to reiterate, I want the whole board to get a clean look at this thing. I didn't want to just have the Facilities Committee and then move it forward. And you all had the presentation. If you have questions, I know you can always come. I think nothing replaces having staff here to talk to them about this, so.
What, what was the opinion of the Facility Committee before we get started?
I think we got two sentences in and they all said, what was the exact phrase?
Wow.
Or so.
Okay.
Because it's going to be beneficial to our contractors and.
Yeah.
Everybody was in.
Absolutely.
And how soon, and how soon could it be implemented?
And how soon could it be implemented, right?
The existing system is just obsolete.
Save your breath.
It's not working good. It breaks down, but they will fix it.
Yes, sir. We've been working on this, I think it's 2017. We previewed a lot of software systems and landed on this OpenGov software system and what will deserve all the stakeholders that are involved in the land development process in the county. And the biggest feature of the system is externally facing. The contractors and the developers don't have to physically come to our office.
Oh, wow.
To apply for.
That's huge.
Everything is online.
Nice.
So when we get calls from California, New York, Virginia, wherever, it's all online. We just, we submit it. We take care of the business and send it back to them and they start work. Internally, it captures a lot of data for us, so we'll be able to make better business decisions about our resource allocation. It'll provide a dashboard for Casey to know exactly the dollars that are coming in on a daily basis. It reports our cash to the general ledger the day it comes in, so he'll be able to see any trends and do any forecasting he needs to do on the finance side. These workflows that get developed, when intake comes in, we'll be able to establish key performance indicators. So that'll dovetail with the efforts in HR to do the job descriptions and that accountability piece. So whenever there is any opportunities for improvement, we'll be able to focus down where we need to put our efforts.
Plus, it shows us if y'all need more staff, you know.
It gives us a lot of data.
Yeah, that's right.
And resources.
That's good.
So we manage our, what we're doing. Absolutely. That's the internal piece.
And versus the basic, the prison system that offers, it invites our contractors that use online services, where the other was, as they say, they're clunky and not, not working.
Currently, it's really difficult for contractors to navigate the online piece now.
So it looks like we're locked in here at least for three years for the subscription cost of 70,250. After that, does it go up or?
I believe in the end-user agreement, it puts in a 5% increase.
After the three years. Now, is that every year after that or do we get another three years or?
That is a very good question. I believe that that is the case, but I'll, I'll verify that.
That it would be five every year after that?
Yeah.
We're currently spending 21,000 a year for maintenance and we're not getting any improvements or any support for that. It's just what we have.
Is a lot of other government entities using this software here in North Carolina?
Davie County is and Chatham County is.
That's awesome.
Those are the big. Yeah, those are the two big ones. Chatham County, when we look at a lot and talk to those people quite a bit.
So you've actually been there, touched it, laid hands on it, used it?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, on, on the frozen cons, it says the cost is 55,000 and 70,000 annually. So each year after the third year, it's going to be 70,000 for a year.
That's the subscription fee.
Okay. And what, what was your subscription fee on the previous one or the one you have now?
It's 21,000.
Annually.
Annually.
Annually. But bad service, et cetera.
It doesn't, it doesn't give us any data capture or any external, we still have to come into our office and try to eliminate that.
Yep, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, I believe, and I take responsibility for this, the, the presentation, if it says 55,000 for the first year implementation cost, that's an old presentation. That's actually been dropped down to 49,580.
Okay, that's right.
The first year is a little bit cheaper, so.
Okay, okay.
But that's just data migration.
That's the migration.
And we get to bring over everything? We're not losing any data whatsoever?
Um, there's some pieces of that. I'm going to let Todd.
All of our retention schedules through the state of North Carolina. We're required to keep permit history for six years and the documentation that's necessary to meet that general statute will be met with this data migration.
Okay.
The, the information that's necessary.
I got you. Okay.
The real thing that Facilities Committee recognized is why we have no work. We've got to do something different. My question was, implementation time, one to two years, is that firm or can you speed it up any at all or?
We were told that once we had an approved contract, we could get started within a six-week period and that implementation for, I think for Chatham County, I think they said that it had taken maybe six months.
Yeah.
Two to eight months.
And when I spoke with the gentleman from OpenGov last week, leading up to the meeting, he reiterated the three to six month timeline and basically, the goal is, is to get to be able to use this for real, so to speak, in January. Now, then a full go-live probably in early spring. So that's making sure to test it, make sure all the kinks are worked out and then roll it out in the spring.
One of the other things we recognized was that we would cut down on complaints from the contractors considerably, which would free up more time for y'all to do the job. It'd be a big thing.
Will we be running the existing software we're using now side by side with it until we're fully live?
Yes, we've already paid that subscription, so we'll have that system until June 30th next year, especially to migrate the data and to get anything we need from it.
So you guys think this will do everything you want and more?
We're hopeful that it'll do more than what we've seen.
I, I will say, as I explained to the Facilities Committee too, it's a very, it is a very impressive product. And I've spoke with contacts that I have in Chatham County as well and they spoke very highly of it. To, it's been very well-received by contractors there and by the staff as well. So, very impressive piece of software.
Our current systems, it stands to.
I was going to say, was you used to have it running side by side?
Yeah. But we need the data, yeah.
Yeah.
We need the data.
We can't click data?
Uh, you're going to have to keep the subscription to get it out. Like I said, if it, if it bleeds on into the spring, it's going to take that long to get everything over and get it cleaned.
Madam Chair.
I'll ask this question answered. Don't tell us money back.
No, no, they'll, they'll charge you for that data.
But we pay for all this maintenance that they were supposed to pay, so we're paying a maintenance fee. They just get, get all scot-free with that.
Pretty mountainous.
Take care of their obligation.
Well, I mean.
It seem like to me they owe us money back.
If there was, if there was a chance to end, to terminate the contract before that, yeah. But, I mean, if we're going to go to June 30th, if it takes that long, it depends on how long it takes to get the data out and get over and get it all migrated over and the system works fine and cut one off, you got, while it's on, they're going to charge you. So if you cut the system off before then, maybe they would owe you June 30, but you're going to have to run two systems.
Probably rated by.
So the maintenance deal, we done just for nothing. So it didn't matter.
Just to keep it, just to keep it running, right?
Too wasted, because it sure didn't help you out a whole lot having to deal with all the problems that you had to deal with.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the award of central permitting software.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Amendment attached in there if you can, if that's part of the approval too. I want to make sure that's clear in the motion to get all.
Yeah, we'll put it in there. Anybody else want to put something in there?
So we have a motion from Commissioner McClure and a second from Commissioner Shores. Please cast your vote.
Yeah, wait me to it.
Thank you.
Good job.
All of the votes are in.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Get a five.
Make a motion to go to closed session.
Okay. I have a motion to go to closed session. Do we have a second? I have a second.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Only about five.
Okay.
Five minutes. You're welcome, contractors. Five minutes. You're welcome, contractor.
And they have the motion.
Motion. The second.
Return of session. All in favor, Mr. Frost? And give us a report on closed session.
Madam Chair, there were several matters that were considered by the Board in closed session. Under the personnel matter, the Board gave direction to the county manager for further action. There were three matters considered under attorney-client. In the first, the Board gave direction to the county attorney for further negotiation. The second was a matter in which a report of settlement was tendered to the Board in that matter entitled Kimberly Davis, plaintiff versus Davidson County self-insured defendant. A copy of the report of settlement has been provided to the clerk. We would ask that it be incorporated within the minutes of this meeting. And the final was a matter of informational purposes only with regard to the pending opioid litigation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Questions for Sharon?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?